Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the Angel City Commission. We have just a few items that we need to cover today, and they're all very important, and I'm glad that you are here with us. Madam Clerk.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're on to the adoption of the agenda. No updates?
Move the purple of the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented and distributed. Any lights? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we're on to our business discussion items for the afternoon. We have 2025-970 Charter Officers' Annual Performance Evaluations and Pay Increases. With the recommendation, the City Commission review the performance of each charter officer, establish appropriate performance ratings, and consider pay increases for fiscal year '25.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. The good news today is that we only have four to consider in front of us, so that's a break this year, while we have an interim city manager. Ms. Grettz, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Laura Grettz, Human Resources Director. It's a pleasure to be with you today. As noted, we are here to discuss charter officer performance evaluations, and thank you, Mayor. One of my talking points was the fact that you all didn't have to do a performance evaluation for Mr. Persons, as he's currently acting in the city manager role. But you did a wonderful job. I want to first extend thanks to you as the commission, your staff, and then charter officers and their staff in going along with the process, meeting the deadlines as appropriate. Each year, we try to refine the process just a bit more so that it works for everybody involved. So many thanks to all of you who were involved with that. It was very helpful for me, so thank you. With that, I wanted to review the summary form, and I'll try to get it for Communications to zero in. This is part of your backup, but just wanted to walk through it briefly. So you'll see before you, this is our summary form. It shows the overall scores by commissioner for each of the charter officers, and then their overall performance score. Very pleased to report that all of our charter officers earned either an exceeds job standards, which is a score of four out of five, or outstanding, which is a five out of five, for their efforts this past fiscal year. And as I mentioned in the agenda item, there has been a budget put in place for increases for the charter officers of 3%. That equates to just over $21,000. It's actually $21,894.30. And at this point, I will open up the floor for you all to either ask any questions or share additional information as you discuss the evaluations and raises.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Grettz. So I don't see any lights, but I will just start off by saying that I am very appreciative of all our charter officers this past year. You all have done particularly good work in, you know, in a challenging budget environment and an overall political environment that continues to be different than it ever has been. So I recognize the challenges before each of you as you manage your departments, and I really appreciate the professionalism and attitude that you have brought to the process. And I just want you to know that personally, and I think I'd probably speak for most, for the entire commission, we are lucky to have you on board. Commissioner Book.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ditto to everything you said, and I think that the 3% that we're giving is lower than the median or the average that we've provided to our staff in the various bargaining units, too. And I think that's important. So when people think that, you know, are we providing monies above and beyond those people are doing the work? That's false. And we're actually giving slightly less, and while these are our highest-paid staff, they're also the ones with the most accountability and the most responsibility and are doing just a dynamite job. The other thing I think is really good about our charters is we've had some real tremendous stability since basically 2023 forward. You know, we've hired someone where we've had, but we haven't. Our first interim since we made permanence is you, Mr. Manager, and that was also stability. That was coming from a city manager and making what was a really good decision and having just incredible continuity. And I think that bodes well for us as a commission, but also for the leadership, you know, the clerk and the attorney and the city manager and the auditor. A lot of continuity, a lot of excellence, and I'm very appreciative also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Book. Anyone else? Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Mayor, you know, ditto. I feel like the stability is pretty important, I think, coming out of some, you know, tight budgetary, but also some transition, some moving. I know that in each of the charter staff, there's been some adjusting of how work is done, trying to still maintain all the services we still want, but also some prioritization. I think I really see that in all of the charters. I really appreciate it, and I think they have been working pretty well together, which is important to me, that they work well together so that we're not surprised and we don't hear different things from different charters about, particularly where work overlaps in between the charters field, where we need a lot of cooperation. I will say that I'm going to propose that the 3% for all the charters except for city clerk, I propose a 10% increase total to, because Ms. Bryant has recently completed the next step in her path for, I forget what it is, the certification, the professional standards for city clerks in Florida. So, and some maturation in the process, or maturation in the job in particular. I've been impressed with great stability there compared to what we have had. So I move that we accept the performance reviews and we establish, and these are the performance ratings, and have pay increases of 3% for the manager, the auditor, the city attorney, the equal opportunity director, and 10% for the city clerk.
All right, that's a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
There is a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Engel.
So I'm also very happy with the performance of all our charters, including the clerk's office. I think it's, I was going to make a similar motion myself, not because of how much better the clerk's office is doing compared to some of the other offices, but this being my first time through the process, I wanted to pull kind of the history and look at like what we've done in the past and all that. And pulling that up, it looks like for our other charter officers, when they were bumped from a interim charter to a permanent charter position, there was a fairly significant raise that came along with that, in addition to their merit raise and all that this year. And looking back at the history of it, I don't see that for the clerk's office, for Ms. Bryant. So to me, it is less about the excellent job you're doing, because I think all of our charters are doing an excellent job, but I do think it's important to kind of true up what probably should have been a raise a year or two ago, I guess last year, when that jumped to a permanent charter officer from the interim to be, because it seems like a big gap between what happened with the clerk's office and all the other charters. So I think to true that back up, equal it out between, you know, so what should have been a raise, I think when we were in some pretty hard times and had to dodge making what probably should have been raised then, to true that up now is why I would support this motion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Human Relations Director, what was Ms., I don't have the papers before me, what was Ms. Bryant's salary prior to taking the position?
So when she was interim city clerk, she was making $120,000. And then moving into the quote, I put permanent in quotes, but the permanent position, she moved to $123,000. It was an increase of 2.5%.
123?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I can't support the 10%. I'd like to see all charter officers receive 3.5%, just as regular staff is receiving, but I can't support a 10%. We are not at the, at almost stable in terms of a budget, and I think we're doing well with the budget, but I think 10% is, sends the wrong message to the rest of the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Willis.
I just want to make sure my motion, I think I may have included manager in that motion, which that's not up for.
You did.
Did I? So I just want to make sure.
Is she?
I don't even want to get your hopes up. But I would, so just, I would like to amend that motion to make sure it's without the manager as part of that, because that's not the four we're considering.
Commissioner Engel is the second. Do you, are you comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah, we can. We can.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Engel. I'm sorry. We'll come back to that.
I just wanted to ask one thing. So the reason the manager isn't included is because he's interim. Did we include the salary increase when he was appointed as the?
So he did.
A significant increase then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Which is significantly lower than what we were paying Ms. Curry before.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Engel.
And just for, again, I kind of want to explain why I would support that 10%. Looking back, when our city attorney was moved from interim to permanent, it was about a 10% raise. For Ms. Curry, it had been about 14%. For Mr. Folsen, I think it was about 20%. And all of them also got a merit raise at the same time that they got the, that same year, they also got a merit raise. The year that Ms. Bryant was bumped up, it was a much smaller bump, it's a 2% or something like that, and there was no merit increase that year. So to me, it looks like there was a serious difference in how we treated that position versus the others. And again, I think it's because, we were talking about, you know, the end of 2023, there was some pretty significant financial problems and those things going on. So to me, it's important to kind of, like I said, not that I think the clerk's office, you're doing a major job, but I don't think they're doing any more amazing job than these other charters. The issue to me is, it looks like we've shorted this worker already, and I think it's important to try and get some equality back built into that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from a standpoint of supporting the idea that when folks obtain professional credentials and professional development, that should be rewarded in ways, sometimes tangible, sometimes they're intangible, ways I do support that. I would be concerned about it for this year only because, it's a significant accomplishment, by the way, so congratulations, is I don't want to create any inequities in how we determine, well, 10% this year for this one, but this particular charter went through a very difficult or challenging year. I think about equal opportunity and all the scrutiny that was on that area, right? And that's a stressful time, you know, for them and for staff. And, you know, that would warrant thinking, golly, how can we let them know that they're valued? So I thought is just, there should be a mechanism to reward staff when they obtain certain thresholds and different things and obtain. So while I'm not keen on the 10% for this year, because we don't have a process in place, I would certainly be in favor of us figuring out amongst HR, what are the things amongst our leadership that warrants additional, like, Commissioner, like merit, additional expertise, additional training, and actual certification, a credential? Because that does, then that takes, it keeps things equitable, so whoever wants to pursue those different things would pursue it. So I don't want arbitrarily provide the 10% on one where there's various challenges and different levels that probably all of our charters have been through this particular year. I support the concept of figuring out a mechanism for the maybe succeeding years that allows HR to tell us, what do we, to put values to specific levels of competence and expertise. That's my thought. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Book. Commissioner Chestnut.
Okay, well, on that note, rewarding performance based on getting certain, meeting certain job increments. For example, the school board gives an extra interim, I think it's 2,500 if you get a master's degree, 5,000, I believe. I may be wrong, so please check with them. If you get a doctorate, and then the employee is rewarded at that time, but you may want to look at that system. What I want to say about the other charter officers, I think when the attorney was promoted, I believe he had 14 years of experience. 20, I'm sorry. Yeah, you, well, yes, you do. You look young. Okay, he had 20 years of experience, and that's what he brought to the job. I think Stephen Mayer, who just received his doctorate this year, also, he received his doctorate, I think in March. Stephen, when did you get your doctorate? When was it awarded?
In August.
August. Received his doctorate, came to us with experience in that field. Cynthia Curry came to us with lord knows how much experience, 20, 30 years of experience and as a manager. Zariah came to us with, how many years?
12.
12 years. So I think the difference, they came with experience in the job, and so that's where I have a problem. It's the achieving that experience and bringing it to the job. I think what happened here, as interim director, that's what Ms. Bryant brought to the job, but she did not bring 10 years or 20 years as the city manager or as the acting city manager. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Engel.
Just wanted to respond to Commissioner Book, that I think it would be a good idea to come up with some, some idea of what a, you know, professional development schedule that may make sense for retired. But again, like, when I look at this one, to me, like, I think this has been a very challenging year for the Equal Opportunity Office. Been a lot of state pressure on it, been a lot of things coming down. But I'm not looking at, again, I think across the board, all of it, everyone's been doing very well. I don't know that the city asked for the next step in education or those things. To me, looking at this, I feel like compared to all the other charter officers we've got on my list of who we've looked at over the past few years, we seem to have skipped a raise for one of them. And to me, it's important to true that back up. So again, I don't think this is because of the next step or because of an accomplishment or because this department was particularly better than the other department. Looks to me like there was an injustice in the past, and I would just soon get that straightened out. So again, that's, to me, it's not because of special accomplishment this year or anything else, it's because when I look back, one of these positions seems to have gotten kind of a real idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. So seeing there for the lights, I'll just give my two cents on this one. With the raise, even if we go at 10%, that position will still be significantly lower paid than any of the other charter officers. And that ought to get some true up, I think. We did hold off on making any kind of substantive increase between interim and permanent, so I'm inclined to support it. Commissioner Willis, would you mind adding to your motion that we task Ms. Grettz with bringing back a, I don't know, a professional development plan for how we might approach raises?
Let me see if I can kind of get this right. Direct the, direct staff to bring us back, or options for charter-specific credentialing and professional development steps or markers or steps, markers, so we understand each of the types of different, you know, that are out there, right? Because our equal opportunity director is going to be a little different than things that are recognized in every single city.
Mayor and Commissioners, if I may interject to provide you some information that might help with your deliberation and considerations, a couple of things. One, for employee increases overall, there was not a 1% across the board. So, right, we have seven different labor agreements, and then we also have our MAPS employees, our professional employees, that are not represented by a union. Our CWA and our MAPS employees, CWA employees receive 3% regardless of performance. Our MAPS employees receive 3%, it's budgeted for 3%. It depends on their performance evaluation score and where they fall within their pay range. And then our different bargaining units have a range of increases anywhere from 3% to a total of, if you include general increases plus a step increase, around 4%. So we run in between 3 and 4. Just, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear and accurate on that. Secondly, we do have a compensation policy here at the city that allows for, it's written in terms of department heads, so not so much at the commission level, that a department head has the discretion to award a special merit increase when an employee achieves a significant milestone. The policy language leaves it rather broad so that the department head can use discretion on what that is applied for. So there is something that exists. It's not, as I said, it's pretty broadly defined, but I'm happy to come back to the commission with something a bit more specific, and we can do some benchmarking against other cities as well, so that you can see how other municipalities handle such situations.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Amendment to the motion.
Okay. You're good, Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right, thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, and then we'll go, we'll ask for public comment. We don't seem to have a lot, but okay. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to allow this moment to get by without me saying a thank you to all of the charter officers and just a very clear acknowledgement of how this team has had to manage through some pretty extraordinary circumstances that not a lot of other municipalities have had to face. I have been extremely impressed at their ability to be nimble and to move, and even in the face of the challenges that sometimes we set before them, they somehow still seem to manage, get it done professionally, and I want them to hear from my mouth to their ear that I certainly do not overlook that or take that lightly. Thank you all so very much. And such a diverse group, a diverse group of talent, skills, abilities, and expertise. And I feel very, very blessed and fortunate to have you as our charters and to be able to be amongst you as you work. Thank you, guys. I do want to also say that, Commissioner Book, I thank you very much for the idea of moving something forward to get us closer, to be able to, in a very specific way, acknowledge when individuals do make progress in their careers. I have had the blessing of knowing Kristen since the time that I got here. She was my EA when I first got here. I think you might have been my second one. And it wasn't because I did anything bad to the first one, but she actually, she left. She left, and Kristen came on immediately and jumped head-on. And one of the interesting things that I have noted about her, as I have observed her progressing through her career, is her ability to kind of be low-key. I think there's a little bit of benefit in that, because that office has seen some real change. When we talk about instability, let's just call it what it was, that particular office faced a lot, and high turnover. And what I've observed Kristen be able to do is navigate through that shift, be nimble, and try to come up with systems that work. She has really made those attempts, and I think that there are still some things that are in the works and in progress, but I'm continuously impressed by her ability to do that. I also believe that in terms of Kristen's ability to budget, there were times in which she simply chose not to increase things when she could have in her budget. That was something that was not lost on me at all. I appreciate that type of fiscal sensitivity, because I think that that was, well, it was rare. And in times when other people were doing it, you chose not to, and that stood out. I remembered that, Kristen, and appreciate you for that. In terms of the 10%, I would be willing to support this motion, because I have watched what the office requires, the office in and of itself. And Kristen, as well as this commission, knows my support of the office and its work. And that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at the individual, but I'm also looking at the office in and of itself. And so I'll go ahead and I will support this motion, certainly with the addition for the special merit increase specifics that HR will provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I am very, I'm very happy with all of the work that our charters have been doing. I know we say this every year, but I guess I'll say it again this year, is that when we, right before, many of us came on, you know, the charters were not always growing in the same direction, trying to get everything moving forward. They weren't like, we needed charters that could both be team players and are going to go above and beyond. And I think, I think we really have that now. We've continued to have that as we've, you know, as we've lost our former city manager, we have our interim city manager here. I just think we have. We have our interim city manager here. I just think we have folks that really are trying to, they understand the goals that we have with the city and they're moving everything forward. And I think that's, and so I'm very happy with where we are with everything as it relates to the increase. So when we're talking about milestones and academic, I guess, things, the city pay, we have a reimbursement program or some kind of a program for academic, for academics, correct?
Certainly. So Mayor and Commissioners, the city has a tuition reimbursement policy. We provide reimbursement to our employees for up to eighteen credits at the state rate of tuition for a degree that's related to their job. And however far someone wants to go, if they wanted to earn their PhD, we will support that within the limits of the policy, obviously. It does not cover certifications. So certifications are handled on a case-by-case basis. Many employees will seek out certifications and they may inquire with their manager or department head, and it may be approved as part of that employee's professional development and is paid for by the city. There are other circumstances where an employee may just choose to do so on their own. So there's not a reimbursement for certifications.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I am, my expectations of all of our charter officers is that, is that everyone goes above and beyond. I mean, this is our most high-profile position, and the same is true with our city commission, quite frankly. I mean, we are expected to show up, everyone that is a face or is one of the outspoken folks within our city. I think it's the same expectation, whether that looks to you like doing, you know, following forward with your academics, getting your master's degree, getting your PhD, or whether that means being at every community meeting, or whether that means going over and doing, being at conferences, learning best practices. I think I don't want to necessarily get us locked into, you know, that there was this professional development opportunity that then came and this person acquired that. I think there's lots of ways that a person can continue to push themselves. And I think particularly at this level, a lot of that is, you know, what are the results that we've seen coming out of your office? Have you been successful in it? I am, I'm comfortable with the three percent increase. The ten percent increase, I'm a little less comfortable with, not anything on any of the particular charter officers because, as you said, our MAPS employees are capped at three percent. That's, is that, that's the majority of our employees, or is it the?
Well, if you count our CWA and our MAPS employees, yes, that would be the majority.
So I'm comfortable that that is what is currently budgeted. I don't think this is a competition necessarily among our various charter officers. I think it's, I think, you know, we want to make sure, it's true with all of us, that we want to make sure that we can make a good living, that we're compensating correctly, that we're being competitive within the market. And so, and I'm comfortable with the salaries as they currently stand, but a three percent increase is what we're giving the majority of our employees. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Is there anyone for a public comment?
No one signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'll say a couple of things, one of which I say every time we do this, that I don't believe that it is a fair labor practice for our charter officers to have to have their evaluations entirely in public. I think that is unfair labor practice, I believe. Now, nobody's going to take that to court, so we'll never actually know. But I do think that this should be a, something that we are allowed. Not necessarily the award of salary increases, but the evaluation itself, I believe ought to be able to be a shade meeting. That is how most of the nation does it. Florida doesn't do it that way. And it affects how we are able to interact on an evaluation basis with the only five people that we manage. And managing five people publicly from seven people is an unwieldy process, which is why most municipalities in America don't do it the way we do. But I think it's important to say that, as I do every single year, and I don't expect that it's going to change, but I, if we're quiet about it, it certainly won't change. And there was something else I was going to say that was positive. And I will just say once again that I think you all do a terrific job for us, and it is, it is challenging. You are, you are part of our staff, you are in the public eye in much the same way that the commission is. And you don't, you didn't necessarily ask for that level of scrutiny, but that is what you end up receiving. So thank you all once again for that. And I know what it was specifically that I wanted to say. This process, mostly thanks to Ms. Gretz's work, has improved drastically over the years. It is a much more professional process that is predictable and is a useful process than it used to be. It used to be really fairly slapdash, and it has become something that we know what the deadlines are for the evaluations. Staff knows what the deadlines are, the commission does, and we are all meeting those deadlines. And that is because Ms. Gretz is on top of it and making sure that we are all playing our part in this process. So thank you for that, Ms. Gretz. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't have the name of it on the tip of my tongue, but Ms. Bryant is now a certified municipal clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And that is the first credential in that, and then the next one is master municipal clerk. That a lot of other clerks in the state of Florida, when you look at the statewide association, you can see the ones that are earlier in their career as a CMC, and then those who have matured and they've worked harder and longer, and they've gotten their master municipal clerk. So I just wanted to, that's what I was referencing. And I will say, I also, I remember at the time thinking when Ms. Bryant stepped from interim to not interim, that the salary I thought was a little low, but in my mind, in my mind it was because she's getting that first certification, when she gets that credential, that is part of that next step, and that we know she's on that path. So that, anyways, that was some in my mind. So as Commissioner Engel mentioned, I remember it as being that we didn't, at that time, do a larger step up. It was right with whatever was happening kind of across the board, fit into the budget. And so that's why this is, to me, it makes sense on both the credentialing side and the kind, a bit of a true up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Willis. I see no for the lights. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
So that's, I believe that passes four-three with Commissioners Eastman, Chestnut, and Book in dissent. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gretz.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to 2025-795, election of mayor pro commissioner pro tempore, with the recommendation that the city commission appoint a mayor commissioner pro tempore for the 2026 term.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So our tradition has long been that the sitting pro tempore make a motion for the, for the next pro tempore. That's, again, that's tradition. We've done it since before I was here, but we are where we are. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Mr. Mayor, I will defer to the sitting pro tempore. I did have a motion, but let's see what he does.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, first, first, I really enjoyed my time as mayor pro tempore. It is obviously an entirely ceremonial position. I got to oversee a couple of meetings here and then do, and have to do some of the media availability when the mayor was not there. It's a, I am looking forward to being not right next to the camera whenever this comes forward so that I'll be able to make a few more faces in there, but I would, I, so there were three commissioners that won their election right at the same time. It was me, Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Book. I think either Commissioner Willis or Commissioner Book would be perfectly fine, would be, would be both great mayor pro temps within there.
Perfectly fine. No, what he said.
Yeah, great. You guys would be tremendous mayor pro temps in the largely ceremonial role of maybe overseeing a meeting once over the course of the year. I guess I will make the motion to, I would like to make, to select Commissioner Casey Willis, though, as the mayor pro tempore, if you believe that you have time capacity and the ability to want to do it at this time.
As you already showed up to every.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. And I want to say, Commissioner Eastman, it is, it is not, it's mostly ceremonial, but it is not always ceremonial because I do travel, and there are times when, you know, things come up. There's a meeting or a couple of meetings or, you know, a document that needs to be signed. These all have to happen. The position of mayor continues to exist whether I'm in the building or not, and it is extremely important that that happens. I appreciate the work that you've done as pro tempore. You still serve in that until our first meeting in January, by the way. But that's, it does matter that we do this. It is not, you know, quite the deal that it is in some, some systems, but it's important to me to know that we are, we always have backup. I've always had great backup from my pro temps. And I appreciate you all having been available when I couldn't be available. So is there any public comment on this?
There is no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I don't see any for the lights. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, and I promise I will keep you updated on my schedule, Commissioner Willis. Madam Clerk.
Just for clarity, that takes effect in January?
Yeah, so the first meeting in January.
Correct.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to 2025-794, discussion items, city commission subcommittee assignments for 2026, with the recommendation the city commission discusses city commission subcommittee assignments.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. So this will be a little messy just because there's a lot of items, a lot of committees and a lot of, a lot of opportunities for service, let's say. And most of those do not have as many people signed up for them as we have positions available. And I'm going to make, bring up some, some ideas about some of these that I think are important to bring up. Traditionally, this was just the mayor-made appointments. I, after some conversations over the past year, I think it's important that we all weigh in on this and that everybody gets to have part of the choice. And what I would ask is that in a, when we get to a motion here, that you all direct me to make whatever appointments we agree on so that it continues to essentially follow tradition, but that everybody has a piece of that. Having said that, let me just throw out the idea, and maybe they don't understand these and just need to be educated on them, but I don't think that we have seen a single recommendation come to this, this commission from the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board in the three or four years that it has existed. I also have concerns about the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, our participation in that. We are a funder of that. I don't know what benefit we get from that, that the people of Gainesville get from that. I'm willing to be educated on that. Nobody signed up to serve on the North Florida, North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Traditionally, we have had to draft people into service for that, commissioners into service for it. That tells me something about what is coming back to us from that. Again, I, we haven't had a single recommendation come to us from that group. I think that it serves very well for municipalities and counties that don't have robust planning departments. We do. We're not like them. We're spending a lot of money to have a robust planning department within, within, you know, our overall context of staff. I would just like us to have some conversation before we get too deep into everything else about the viability of our participation in those two. Water and climate policy are incredibly important, but I don't know that that particular committee, which often doesn't even have a quorum, is moving that, that policy forward. Just some general thoughts on that. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, I don't actually believe we're a funder anymore. I believe we ended our funding of that with the past fiscal year.
Okay.
I think for many of the same issues that I think we're, you know, we talked about.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Book.
Just context on two of the committees, the UF Communities Steering Committee on Responsible Alcohol Use just spent one time last year, and I'm uncertain if it actually continues. So that could be one that we take off the schedule. And if it, if it, you know, if it comes back up, then we make sure. We always have city staff there anyway, so we may not need to have a commissioner for that particular one. And then on the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, I've been on it for the three years. I think probably the two benefits from the city perspective were just, one, the networking with the region and understanding what's going on, which is always very important, and the fact that it was a leverager for grants or funding streams. For example, you want them to kind of weigh in. So there's just a little context on those two.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Commissioner Willis.
I did the Regional Planning Council for two years, and I agree, we weren't getting much back. One thing that's sort of good, sometimes they, there are associations with state, with water management districts and state programs like Main Street Florida or Florida Main Street. Sometimes there's some good when those are presented, those are fine. I will say it's also, serving on the Clearinghouse Committee is good for, you know, new commissioners, learning a little bit about how other, you know, changes to comp plans in other places. Seeing it one more time, once a month, really, about the different counties and cities. That can be a little educational, seeing those come in on the Clearinghouse Committee. So that's, I mean, theoretical benefit to people. I know that I would, I appreciate being on that committee because I've learned a little bit those two years. So, yeah, in the joint water, not very many things, there've been some presentations. If we do keep with it, perhaps we would ask maybe a commissioner, you know, to communicate some of that stuff when, you know, if they have a really great presentation or whatever, to then communicate a little bit to the whole commission about what that is, right? What it was, what it's about, what the feedback in the community is. Because I feel like there is a bit of disconnect there, so that's just a, just a thought. Thank you.
So my perception of that committee is that a lot of, if not all of, the presentations that are made are made to both the city and the county commission separately. So I don't know, I don't know if it's new and different or not. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. The only thing with the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and again, this is just because my head's been in the comprehensive plan as of late, is that within the comp plan, if there is any disagreement between various governmental entities, I recall that the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council is the designated mediator, though of course, courts are generally the mediator of that. But, I mean, would you, I mean, have we, in your memory, or maybe Mr. Attorney, have we ever used that mediation process before? I mean, is that a thing that is worthwhile for us to, to continue to have a voice on in case that ever comes forward?
Mr. Mayor, yes, once. We, we did begin a mediation, the mediation process. We had recently annexed portion of the property along Tower Road and near Split Rock Park. The county had challenged the city's annexation. It was arguably, so the annexation was legal in city staff and the attorney's opinion. However, the county had concerns about how it would affect transportation planning, particularly funding. And so as a result, the county initiated a challenge. We did use the Regional Planning Council for a single meeting. That was not ultimately how we resolved the issues. Ultimately, it's just staff sitting down with county staff and coming up with a compromise solution. And as you point out, it is not the only way to mediate. I didn't necessarily find that the, in my experience, as I was at the mediation meeting, that it was anything that we couldn't have already done ourselves. It was just something that it was a formal process. And again, this was not initiated by the city. It was initiated by the county through the Regional Planning Council.
I mean, I guess more broadly on this, the, so for instance, the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, on a consent agenda like a couple of months ago or the last month, I forget exactly when, but we had approved a interlocal that was propped for it on that. We would probably have to revise that interlocal at that point, right? Which is, I guess, why you're bringing up that conversation. And the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, I imagine there's bylaws that states, you know, who appoints whom within there. And so it, I don't have a problem with either one of those. At minimum with the Regional Planning Council, we don't probably need three members that have to serve on it constantly. I mean, you could probably have, if we think it's important for us to be on there, we could probably have a single member that has a voting ability on there. probably have a single member that has a voting ability on there. They're at, kind of on times, they're always at nighttime, right? I, I haven't served on it, but they're, um...
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, this...
Thirty thirty.
Someone who raises a kid, it's hard to get seven o'clock on my calendar for much of anything. Um, the, uh, so I, which is fine, this is the job, but like, it's, uh, you know, it's the kind of thing that it's, um, that i- i- it might make sense for us to have on there, but it might not make sense for us to have on there at the extent that we have it on. But at, um, I don't know what kind of action you would like for us to take it, but I doubt we could take definitive action at this meeting on those things without going and looking at that in a local, because I'll say with the Joint So- Water and Climate Policy Board, which I've served on the whole time I've been on, is great. We were largely focused on our climate action plan at the city and the climate action plan at the county, which has now been completed, right? Um, and, uh, I, it probably makes sense for us to think, what does the future of that hold? And it, should this be more of a time limited board, working on those projects as opposed to, you know, an ongoing thing? And if it is ongoing, what are those projects? I don't know if these committees need to be standing indefinitely, right? I think they can work these things through, and so, um, I, there might be some action that we could take to those, to those two points, but, um, it seems hard, it seems like a, like, it seems ambitious to think that we, we'd vote on it within this meeting to say we're gonna get rid of it, right?
I, I'm not necessarily saying that, that, that we should, but if we don't talk about it, then we, it's hard to make policy if we don't have a conversation.
That's the only way we can have conversations about it, right?
Right.
Sunshine Law. So thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
So regarding specifically Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, if we don't provide three members, that, that it's gonna create quorum issues. So they won't be able to meet. Um, but when, when that was originally set up, it's set up to have a specific number of, of county members, specific number of city members, and I'm not sure, it may just be our, either five or six. But if, if we don't have three appointments to it, then they may have trouble meeting quorum, which means they can't make a recommendation for whether they should continue to exist or not. Um, and I would point out that Commissioner Engel's light is on, and Commissioner Engel is the only person who signed up for, for that out of the three potential positions available. Commissioner Engel.
I don't know if you guys do this or not, but I'm the only commissioner who's signed up for that one. Oh, so I, and I will speak, uh, on, uh, just kinda in favor of the Joint Water Board. Um, to me, it was useful, not only, um, in the, in the things we focused on there, because there was some, um, except the kinda, the climate policy we had, the, um, bicycle pedestrian master plan, we were just looking at our last meeting on that. Um, it also gives us just like a little bit more ways to regularly formally work with the, the county, and I think having a good working relationship with that is beneficial as well. Um, there's a lot of projects we need to work on together, just across the board on things, and I, I think having that regular sit down where we're all working together and having that working relationship in and of itself is, is valuable, in addition to some of the things the board's done. So, um, so I, I feel like I've gotten something out of that, at least being part of it, and uh, it does seem to have some value for that on me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Engel, for that. I, I will say that when I served on the, uh, the, uh, when it was just the Joint Water Policy Board, um, a, a thing that it created was an inability for me to talk to the county members of that board outside of the meeting, because we were on a sunshine board then. So I couldn't talk to Robert Hutchinson and, uh, and Mike Byrdley, who were on that board, about things I wanted to talk to them about, um, outside the meeting. So keep that in mind as, as well. Okay, with, uh, I don't see any more lights, uh, on this, is there any public comment on, on the topic in general?
There is no public comment.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Book.
Yeah, I was just thinking from the, um, for the one that we've had the most discussion about the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, unless there's a, um, legal requirement for us to have three, I would say that we should have two. And I do think we should stay involved in that, because the, um, the nature reputationally, when you're in a region of being the biggest city and protect, exiting something, puts you at odds with many other municipalities in the region. And, um, as Commissioner Eastman talked about, there is a, there is a slight thing where they do approve comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, in my tenure there, they've, they've approved, I think a hundred percent of those that have come through, and from, I don't, and you, you were on there also.
I remember.
Um, but, but the fact is, we don't wanna be, um, so isolated amongst our region when we know that we're an economic driver for the region, that there's benefit and like, you, you've kind of indicated the networks and the, per se, the, um, the, um, the people on there. So I do think it'd be appropriate to have two on there, unless there's some other requirement that forces a staff three, and then I, I would recommend that for the moment, the UF Community Steering Committee, I don't believe it exists, so we can take that off and we can always, um, at the dais, put that back on should they meet one time in the preceding year. That gives a little more flexibility.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Book. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will say that I, uh, for the, uh, Elatra County League of Cities, I'm very glad that Commissioner Eastman has been serving on it. Um, but I think Commissioner Book would also be great, um, because of his ties across the community, but I think the two of them are really good options for that, is what I'll say. Um, and then, so, uh, clarify, if we, the Planning Council, if we are no longer a paying member, are we a member at all? Mr. Manager.
That would need to probably do a little bit more research to be able to answer that question. Um, uh, we might be members, or we might participate by virtue of just being a local government within their, um, overall span of, of, um, of responsibilities, uh, but we can certainly research and get back with you on that.
Okay, 'cause I, I was thinking more like, if you're not a paying member, you're not really a member, um, and then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to, so that was kind of how I was, uh, memorizing it. Um, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Willis. So regarding specifically the, uh, the Planning Council, um, let me suggest that because those members come with votes, I think, right? I mean, if you're a, if you're a appointed member, you, you're gonna vote, we should, we should appoint three, whether they go all the time or not, in case we need to be represented with three votes, we should take full advantage of that. That said, and there are a few of these categories that I'm gonna ask for this on, I need volunteers, because I have zero right now. No, nobody signed up for the Planning Council.
Zero out of three?
Yes.
Wow.
Um, the way, which is what prompted me to, to, to bring it up, is that nobody wants to serve on it.
Other questions?
Okay, yeah.
Other meetings by Zoom?
Yes.
All of them?
They are all hybrid.
Hybrid.
Uh, they're, they're all hybrid, so you have the opportunity to, to attend via Zoom. They are seven PM once a month, typically on Thursday, unless you're on another subcommittee. Um, or the option, they typically meet in person in Lake City, and they have alternated and met here, I think, three times in the last two years in Gainesville, and that was at our request, so, yep.
Yeah, well, it's generally always been in Lake City. And I, I remember when the meeting here was added.
Yes.
Yeah, but I do not have any desire to serve on that committee.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, um, we're happy to, uh, we're happy to research Commissioner Willis's question, and maybe if, if, um, if, if truly the, um, that we're not paying or not members may help moot the issue. If not, we can report back and y'all can, you know, potentially make an appointment at a future meeting if needed.
Very good, all right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say that I'm happy to, I've not taken the hit on serving on the Regional Planning Council. I understand that, uh, historically, it has been the newest members of our commission are the ones who are hazed into being on the Regional Planning Council. I, and so I, I'll take the, I will say, I would, but, um, it makes sense, I mean, I think we could probably have three people that, that would, you know, volunteers tribute for the Regional Planning Council and then have the, uh, city manager review, you know, with the bylaws of that state and see, uh, what, what comes back with that, but I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to serve on that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Engel.
Yeah, I'm happy to put my name on, uh, on the Regional Planning Council as well, um, especially if we've got the kind of idea that we've got three of us, we can't, all of us can't always make it, you know, we've got some representation there, if some issue does come up, or, you know, we do need to vote on something, any of those. So assuming that we do still have, uh, representatives and not paying, not being a paying member doesn't mean that we, we've lost votes on that, I'll, I'll sit in on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So not seeing any for the lights on, let me read you the list of, of who all has signed up for what, just to, to get started on, on this process. Uh, the Audit Committee, uh, I can't remember if it's by, um, by ordinance or by charter, I think it's by ordinance, uh, the mayor and the pro tem, uh, must serve on it, those are the only, and, and a, an external member, um, who is already, uh, serving, um, um, oh gosh, Madam Clerk, help me out.
Hell. Mr. Monk.
Yes, uh, and, and Mr. Monk has served for a couple of years, uh, for three or four years, actually, since it has been open to outside members. Um, so that is, those are the three members of the, uh, of the Audit Committee. Finance Committee has three positions available. Uh, Commissioner Engel, uh, has to be, has to serve on that and rated it, uh, his number two item, and Commissioner Willis rated that his number three item. Um, so we need one more person, one more commissioner to serve on that.
I, I, I like serving on the Finance Committee, I think it's a, it's a, it's a committee that is useful, uh, to, um, to, to know what's happening and what's coming down the pike, and so if no one else is interested, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, very good, uh, thank you for that. Commissioner Willis.
This is a little too recent, we're down a little stretch.
Okay, all right, um, hit, hit your button again there if you would, just so you're in the queue.
Thank you.
Uh, for Library Governing Board, um, Commissioner Engel put that as his, his, uh, number three choice. Commissioners Chestnut, Willis, and Duncan Walker all put it as their number one choice. We have two positions. Uh, the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, where you talked about that, and I've got two of the positions here with, uh, with, uh, willingness to serve. Tourist Development Council, we have one seat on that. Um, uh, Commissioners Chestnut, Book, and Eastman put it as their second choice, and Commissioner Duncan Walker put it as her third choice. Um, the Combined Communications Center Executive Board, um, we have one position, and that is, uh, the, by the charter of that committee, I guess, the mayor, uh, serves that position. The Elatra County League of Cities, we have one position, Commissioner Book, uh, made it his second choice, Commissioner Eastman made it his first choice. Uh, the, um, Responsible Alcohol Committee with UF, as Commissioner Book noted, maybe it exists, maybe it doesn't, um, but Commissioner Book, uh, expressed a willingness to serve on that if, if it continues to, to, to exist. Uh, Joint Water Policy, Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, Commissioner Engels are only, um, a person, uh, who indicated a willingness to serve on that, and that was his number one choice. Uh, the Ship A-HAC, uh, Committee, our, our representative on that, we have one representative and one alternate representative to that board. Uh, Commissioners Willis and Duncan Walker indicated, uh, that is their second choice. Commissioner Willis, you currently serve, correct?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Um, I didn't know, Commissioner Duncan Walker, whether you're particularly interested in, in Ship A-HAC this year, you know, and so I just, I can't be on, I, I forgot that being on Audit Committee with Mayor Pro Tem, so that I don't wanna be on four, right? So I, I have three preferences and a mandate.
Well, and, and Commissioner Eastman indicated it as his third choice, so...
Right. Um, uh, so, um, but anyways, I just bring you up the ship, 'cause I didn't, 'cause I knew that, um, I served on it this year, if it's something that you're particularly, s- some years, there's more stuff coming in or out of different policies, so I just wanted to ask if that was something you're particularly interested in, um, because I probably wouldn't have put that on my list if I knew that I was gonna do Audit Committee. Though Audit doesn't meet every month, they meet...
It's basically every other month.
Every, about six, which is the same as, um, uh, Finance meets about, you know, about six times a year, by the time we're done, four, five, six budget amendments, so. Anyways, I just didn't know how interested, if, if you had a burning desire this year as opposed to in the past, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, uh, thank you, Commissioner Willis. To be honest with you, um, my number one is my number one priority, and that is the Library, um, Governing Board, which I know you also have selected, so, um, honestly, I, I have a desire to have a conversation about how we all have a chance to do our number one at least one time during our term, you know? So i- it's possible, I mean, uh, Ship A-HAC, obviously, you know, the, the subject matter that's covered there is very, very important to me, um, but in the interest of complete transparency, my number one priority right now is the Library Governing Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, Commissioner Engel.
Um, I was gonna say that, uh, there's several people that put in for the Library Governing Board, and that was on my list as well. Um, I'm happy to bow out of that, um, 'cause I know it was a, a top priority for several people. Um, that would leave me on a Finance, Regional Planning Council, and Joint Water and Climate, um, which don't seem to be, uh, the top of anyone's list, so... Um, so I'm, I'm happy to step into those three, and I think that would maybe alleviate some of the, the pressure on the others.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Engel, Commissioner Chestnut.
Okay, I just, I want, I just wanted to give my number one, uh, is the Library Board, and, um, the Tourist Development Council.
Okay. Okay, uh...
I got two numbers.
Commissioner Book.
Yeah, I'm only listed on two at the moment, uh, one was the Audit and, and I think the one we probably sunset, which is the Alcohol. So the, um, the two that I would be listed on would be Tourist Development Council or League of Cities. That's it.
Okay, all right.
I served the three years on the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council.
You've, you've done your time. I've done more time than anybody on there and, and enjoyed it, but, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Book. Okay, so Finance is solved, Audit is solved, uh, the Regional Planning Council is as solved as it's gonna get.
Water is solved.
Uh, Water is as solved as it's gonna get. Um, the Combined Communications Center is solved, um, and Commissioner Willis, did you, I, I, I'm not clear, are you willing to take yourself out of, you are willing to take yourself out of Ship A-HAC? Is that, okay. All right, so that is solved. Well, that means, uh, Duncan Walker and Eastman are, one of you will, will be the member, one will be the alternate.
Okay.
Um, so the only things we don't have solved are the Library Governing Board, where we have Commissioners Chestnut, Willis, and Duncan Walker, all indicating that is their first choice. Uh, Tourist Development Council, where we have Commissioners, um, uh, Book, Chestnut, Duncan Walker, and Eastman, um, all indicating that they wanted to serve three as their number two choice, and Commissioner Duncan Walker is our third choice. Um, League of Cities, Commissioner Book and Commissioner Eastman, uh, both indicated they wanted to serve on that, um, and those, those are the three that we still need to solve. Commissioner Engel.
I did have a question on the policy, um, for alternates, and, and who makes that decision? So, for instance, on my pension board I sit on, probably, uh, we've got the option to, to appoint an alternate, that person has no, uh, particularly voice on the committee or vote unless one of the other committees is, one of the other people's not gonna make it. Um, I believe the, the Ship A-HAC Committee, we've got an alternate there that, again, has no voting power unless the, um, the actual delegate is, is not able to make it.
I, I, I think the way to solve that particular one is, because that is an official alternate position...
Sure.
...is by, um, seniority.
Sure, but my question was, can we make an alternate for the Library Board? To say that we don't have, if one of our people can't make it, someone could step in as an alternate? Because it sounds like we've got several people that, that's their first choice, and that might ease that up a little bit to, uh, to have not miss a, a vote if we've got somebody missing, but I don't know if that was a decision we could make or that had to be with the Library.
I don't think we can, because that's a, I mean, that, that is a taxing authority, it's, it's got its own very specific set of rules.
They have their own rules on appointments.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, but thank you, that, that, that's a, a great idea. Uh, Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, I mean, it might be, probably, it's a, Library Board was created similar to the Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority, except much more legally and by the book, which is that we wanted to create a Library Board, um, we wanted a special taxing district, the legislature passed a local bill, the local community supported it, and so it has its own bylaws, but it may be possible, I've not read the Library Board's, um, uh, law that created it. Um, as it relates to Elatra County League of Cities, Commissioner Book, when I, when I was first appointed to the Elatra County League of Cities, um, Gainesville had appointed someone to the Elatra County League of Cities for ten, for years.
They always appoint. From my understanding, they, no one at the Alachua County League of Cities could remember the last time Gainesville actually showed up. To Williston, to Newberry, to these places. And they were fairly certain that I was going to stop showing up fairly quickly, like I'd show up at first and be interested. I was, and, and I, so it's been a priority of mine, not that these, not that the Alachua County League of Cities, that, you know, very robust, important policy decisions get made out of it, but just simply like the Gainesville needs to be at the table of the other, of the decisions of the municipalities as they're having these, these conversations. Generally, most of the time gets talked about us bragging about, you know, new events happening in our cities once a quarter, you know, that this investment's happening. You'd be great at it, frankly. I do serve on the Florida League of Cities, some subcommittees there where there is real policy decisions that get made. And I don't think my appointment to the Alachua County League of Cities is contingent upon that, but I'm not entirely sure. I don't think it, so. What, what is true is that it's fairly informal, so if we, we want to do an alternate situation where if you can't make it, I could, or if I can't make it, you could. But I do think it's important because we have, we have, we have not been at the table of the Alachua County League of Cities, and I had to really promise that, no, we're serious. Gainesville is going to be here to have these conversations, that these would be someone at these meetings. And so I, and so I'm happy to step away. It's a, like I said, it's a lot of just shaking hands with the mayors of Williston and stuff like that, but it's, I still think it is important regardless of that.
So I would note that Williston is in Levy County.
I'm sorry, what am I thinking of? I'm thinking of, yeah, Williston is in Levy County. I don't know, Hawthorne, High Springs, McEnopie, all, all these folks.
So it sounds like that one is, is fixed. And Commissioner Book, if you can't make it, let Commissioner Eastman know, and he'll, he'll, he'll be there. All right, cool. We, we fixed that one. So that leaves us, and it sounds like we, we've got, we do have SHIP AHAAC confirmed. Commissioner Duncan Walker, you'll be, unless you want to be the alternate for some reason, you, you would be by virtue of seniority, the, the member. And Commissioner Eastman, you would be the alternate if Commissioner Duncan Walker's unable to be there. Okay. So that one's fixed. Tourist Development Council and Library Governing Board remain outstanding. Commissioner Eastman, did you have, was that your comment earlier? Okay, all right. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on this? I, I would remind everyone that Commissioners Willetts, Chestnut, and Duncan Walker are, have all indicated that that is their, their number one choice, Library Governing Board. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Mr. Mayor, I, I can say this, you know, I, I think that this is probably going to always be an issue. The Library Governing Board is just, it's an exciting board. And whether it is this commission or commissions beyond us, I have a feeling that it's always going to be, or it stands a chance, that there will always be several commissioners who want to serve on this board. And so my question is how we can chart a clear and fair way for each commissioner who has this as their number one to be able to serve at least one time during their, their, their tenure on the dais. So I wonder if the idea, and I know that this, the Library Governing Board is a little different from a lot of our other committees here. Perhaps we need, I don't know if anybody here can answer this, but maybe a little research into the idea of term limits on this board. Because if you are serving for an extensive amount of time, yet you have, and at one point we had one, two, three, four of us here who wanted to serve on the board, three of those four had it as our number ones. So I'm just concerned and would like a little more conversation around, and frankly, would not be opposed to letting staff figure a way forward and then coming back later and deciding, you know, with a fair process, so that each commissioner can serve at least one time. I think that's, this is always going to be the issue, and that there's really, we're limited in terms of how we can do this fairly.
So I will tell you, the, the criteria that I used in, in the previous years, and I was kind of hoping we could do, but it just doesn't work out this way, is that we would, that everybody would who wanted to serve on it would eventually get to serve on it by having, you get two years on it. One year, you're the new person, then you move into the senior position. And then the, the new person the next year moves into the senior position, and somebody who hasn't served yet moves into that one. All three of you who indicated this is your number one have all served at least one year on, on the Library Governing Board.
One.
Commissioner Engle is, is the only one, well, the only one who have indicated an interest and this year and have not served. Commissioner Book has not served by it.
I'm sorry, I, I want to make sure I'm clear about what you said, Mr. Mayor. Did you say that your original idea was that each of us would serve two years?
Correct. So, so that you, so that we have some, some institutional memory moving from one year to the next.
Because I think I only served one, if my memory serves me correctly.
That's probably correct. Commissioner Willetts, you've served one. Commissioner Chestnut, you, you've served twice. Okay. I, I only served, by the way, and my only service on it was for three months until a previous mayor changed it up. But I don't have time to serve on it, so, so it is not, you know, I'm not in that conversation. But that was the only way that I could think of, that it would be a, that it would make sense. You start serving, you learn about it, then you move into the senior position, and then you move out. And that gives some sort of rotation there. That, that's just a, a thought on that. Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, not at this time. But I would just like to indicate if the two years is the case, then I've only served one. I would like to go back.
Gotcha. Okay. Commissioner Willetts?
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking a little bit about that, because previously when commission terms were only three years, it changes a little bit. When you have four years, it's a little.
Correct.
The kind of cycling on, like for instance, I've served it on my third, during my third year in the commission. And I'm glad it was during my third year, not the first year. I, I like that, because I was a little more confident in the city stuff. And better relationships with some of the commissioners and school board members. So that's why it felt very natural to be on that far in third, fourth, and that's why I like the idea of a fourth year. So that's what I would just say, because who knows, I might not be on, you know, commission for a fifth year. So that's why, one of the reasons I wanted, there's a bit of, you know, that kind of idea of continuity, but at the same time, you want lots of different portions of the commission to have rotations through. So that's one of the reasons why I listed it, because it'd be sort of continuity, the same way I'm still willing to do Finance, because I'm, I, I like it enough that I'm like, I should do this. So that's kind of why, was, was some of my thought process, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Book?
Yeah, I was very flexible on the assignments, Mr. Mayor. Since you've got, you've probably got about, it looks like about three fourths of this complete. Probably the most equitable thing, I think, to do would just go down and see how many we're on. And so if someone's on four, then it probably, it wouldn't be the, the next one. And just amongst the seven of us, there probably, all of us should be on at least two, and a couple of us will be on three, just on the numbers. And if we go down, if you go down the list, we might, we might know the gap within one minute, really, and see, so. And that, that would lend us to know who should be on whatever your remaining gaps are. That's, that to me seems to be, to me, probably the, the fairest thing to do.
So part of that is, that's a good idea. Part of this can be a little bit affected by the Tourist Development Council, which is the next one, one to bring up.
Yeah, I suggest we just go down the ones what we know. And we know, for example, if it was, you know, the, the mayor's on five committees, well, then whatever's left, you wouldn't be on that one, that type of thing. See, because I haven't been keeping up with the things, but clearly, everybody should be, what's that?
The mayor don't want to be on five.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suspect so. And I would say, everybody should probably be on at least two. And, and there's going to be a couple of us that are on three, I think. That's, that's.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Book. So going by that way of thinking, that leaves Commissioners Chestnut and Duncan Walker as the choices for Library Governing Board.
The only two choices, right? Based on, is that what you meant?
But the, the, the number of committees served, because Commissioner Willetts is on Audit and Finance. Audit and Finance, yeah.
Right, just, just on equitable distribution of committees, they would be the ones that are on lesser, lesser amount of committees. Well, that to me makes it pretty easy right there. I don't know what you think, Commissioner Willetts, unless someone felt really passionate, that's just kind of inequitable distribution. You just go down whatever the other gaps are and see who has the least, and see who still needs it.
Commissioner Willetts?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be transparent. I appreciate that you have transparency. And what, what's not in part of all of this is attendance at the committees we have been appointed to over the past several years. I have almost perfect attendance at all of my committees. I missed one Regional Planning Council Committee during my second year. And I think we missed Library Board when we needed to. We were there for a budget meeting. And a normal meeting, and then we head to, yeah, so. I think those are the only, I think those are the only meetings I have missed. And so I served on three active boards. AHAAC is almost every month. Library Board is almost every month, sometimes a couple of meetings. And so one of the reasons why I'm willing to serve on three is because I show up to all three. My first year on, on, on Planning Commission, I got a perfect attendance award, even though it's not always the most fun or the most, you know, we get the most out of it. And then the second year I missed, I believe, one. And I think I only missed it because I was out of town on a city-funded trip, if I remember right. Anyways, so I bring that up because I, I, the reason why I'm willing and want to serve on three is because I know I will show up to all of them. And I think it is important that when these get picked, that the people, that people show up to them. That's what I'm, I, I want to be transparent about. And I know we don't all, not everyone can get to everything all the time. SHIP AHAAC is the one where we actually have the ability to do an alternate. I was able to alternate once for Rana Saka when she couldn't. And that also gave me a, a bit of a intro into that. So anyways, I wanted to be transparent about that, that one of the reasons I'm willing to do three. And even willing, you know, if we have to send someone back to Planning Council to have our votes, then, you know, but that's a later discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, attendance is very important. I actually have the attendance records here from the Library Governing Board from, I think, 2022. But I think what's even more important, or I should probably say just as important with being present, is an expertise in the subject matter area. But also then, you know, if we're talking about being fair in, I'm, I'm always going to come back to being fair in allowing people an opportunity to serve. So for me, that then gets back to the idea of how long you're there. Because there are a lot of boards and a lot of, you know, that, some individuals have sat on boards for years. And that takes away an opportunity for other people to come to the board. So attendance, yes, is very, very critical. But I think also the idea of how long we can sit in these places has to have a bearing on the way that we make these selections. Because if not, you will alienate colleagues from wanting to serve on any board. If they know that there is a, a chance that they may never get to be where they want to be. So the Library Governing Board is something that falls directly under the idea of arts, culture, and literacy. Those things are all married with each other. And everybody that knows me knows that that is, that's been my profession for the last 30 years of my life. So the Library Governing Board will always be my first choice. That's one of the reasons why I'm suggesting, because every time this comes around, I'm going to put a one. Probably Commissioner Willetts and probably Commissioner Chestnut will do the same. But that's why I'm suggesting, moving forward, that we're all very clear and transparent about how we're going to make this decision. And while attendance can be one thing, I really don't think that that has to be or should be the gold standard in how we make this selection. A lot of things come up. I'll use this example, and I will use myself as the example, because I sat on the Library Governing Board and missed several meetings. In 2022, it was one of the most challenging years of my life. My mother got very ill, and there were a number of meetings that I had to miss. At the end of the day, it is critically important to me. All thanks be to God, that is not my test, my mother's testimony anymore. She's much, much better. And so I don't have the obligations to meet her medical needs that I did back then. But I will say again, outside of attendance, I think that in order to bring people to all of these boards fairly inequitably, we need to have some very clear ways to do that. And if term limits are the way, then I think that's what we need to do. This has to be fairly done across the board so that all of us actually want to do this. I don't want us to get to this point at, in any year where someone is turned off with this process because you know you're not going to get what you really, really want and where you know your strengths are. This is a strength of mine. You would never see me signing up for Joint Water and Climate, because that is not my strength. It's just not my wheelhouse. Interesting information, we'll listen intently when that information comes back and learn, but that's not my wheelhouse. This one is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the, the Library Governing Board is one that I have enjoyed. I think because it brings a diversity of people together. It impacts all of us, whether you're in the arts, or you're in education, or you're in finance. The Library Governing Board is important. Attendance is very important. Because if you're not there, you cannot contribute in making decisions. That one is important to me. The Tourist Development Council, this, I followed Commissioner Eastman. This is a very interesting one. I'm trying to figure out how the City of Gainesville can tap into some of the funds at some point. But I think that that one requires, oh, as I said, all of them require attendance. Being there, being there to represent. I don't support term limits on, on, on committees. I, I, I don't think that that is the way to go with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Willetts?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just offer two things. One, I think we just like to argue our case and make the mayor in the hot seat. This is part of, sometimes we don't get as much arguing our, our one case, you know? But also, one of the, the joys of being on the Library Board, at least, you know, like this past year, is we got to reduce the tax rate for people in the county. We did.
And that's always very good.
It's always, it feels really good when, when everything lines up, the budget, and to be able to drop the millage rate. You know, it felt really good. In the future, they might have to increase millage if they're going to build some new libraries. But anyways, I just, I offer that as a little, a little lightness.
And it's good to serve on a board that has money.
I assume that's true. I don't know.
That's money. That's the only board that I know that has some money to do something with. And the library director does an excellent job in providing services across, across, across the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Commissioner Eastman?
Well, y'all have convinced me. I think I'm going to put that as my number one choice right now, so put my name in the hat, too. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm now in it, too, guys. Come on. No, I'm, I'm choked. I've never lowered a tax before, so, and I've never been a part of a board with any money, so this is, this is great. Now, do we, I guess we need some kind of way to settle, some, some, you mentioned, you know, seniority or time on, on there. And I have not kept up with the three, but I, I'm guessing someone, maybe that is not on one of, that, that, that is not putting their hat in the ring, should. We need some way to, to mitigate the whole thing. How long has everyone, I've not kept up with the whole history of this. How long have folks served on this board? Like, it is.
Commissioner Chestnut has served twice. Okay, Commissioner Duncan Walker served once.
And then Commissioner Chestnut, twice during this particular, this tenure here on the dais. But you haven't, you had previous experience on the Library Governing Board prior to this particular term?
I don't think that can be counted. You mean, pre, previous experience?
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier in my life?
Just, just for context.
Are you saying earlier in my life?
I'm saying earlier in your political career. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and you had experience in your, in your career?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm just asking for context.
But, 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 no, 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 no. I don't want anyone to count any experience I had in a prior political experience. I don't think that's fair. I had the opportunity to serve on the county commission, and I, I thank the citizens for that. I don't think I should be punished because I had the opportunity. No, I don't think I should, because I had the opportunity to serve the citizens. No, I don't think that's fair.
And Commissioner Willetts has served one year.
Yeah, one year.
So Commissioner Eastman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Chestnut, I just wanted to be clear. I did not want to indicate or in any way make it seem like I was suggesting that you should be punished. That's not at all what I was suggesting. I think that, once again, back to the original point that I was making, in terms of everyone being able to have the opportunity to serve, just so that we all understand where we've been. It's about opportunity for me. So I hope that you did not receive it that way. That was not.
That is exactly how I received it.
That's unfortunate, because that's how it was intended.
Exactly how I received it.
It's not how it was intended, okay?
No, so, so you can't count my, my prior political experience.
Well, that's, that's okay. It's good to know. I think it's a good thing for everyone to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. All right, since we don't have any solution on that one, let's talk about the Tourist Development Council. Similarly, Commissioners Chestnut, Commissioner Book, and Commissioner Eastman had that as their number two. Commissioner Duncan Walker had it as her number three. We have one position. My recommendation is going to be that, that be Commissioner Book, because the only other thing he's serving on is the Alachua County League of Cities. But I'm going to recognize Commissioner Book. Okay, all right. I'm certainly going to wait for Commissioner Willetts to come back in. But I would, again, I'm, the reason we're doing this is so that we can agree on how you all direct me for these appointments this year. the reason we're doing this is so that we can agree on how you all direct me for these appointments this year. Yes, yes. My inclination would be to appoint Commissioner Book to, to that one, because he's only on one other one. Of course, Commissioner Chestnut is only, well, is contested on two.
I'm not on any board.
Right. I, I'm interested in hearing what Commissioner Ingall thinks down there. He's got his light on.
There's a, there's plenty of room for everyone on the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council and the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, if you just like this place coming in.
All right, that was not helpful, Commissioner. All right, here's one I'll ask, that we, well, when Commissioner Willis is back in the room, I, I, I'm going to ask that we distribute a ballot for both of those committees. We've got two blank sheets of paper, or, you know, blank rosters here. Commissioner Willis?
Mr. Mayor, all of the commission only has one.
One.
You have two, the, the rest of the commission only have one piece of paper.
Oh, okay, okay.
That we can get more printed, so no worries.
All right, well, Commissioner Willetts?
Mr. Mayor, so I will withdraw my interest in the Library Governing Board. I just like to make a good argument.
Okay.
But I also know that I might be running for reelection next year, maybe I'll need the time. But also, that's when the Gainesville Greenway Challenge does their work pulling plants on Thursday mornings, and occasionally, I've had to pull plants and leave early and come unshowered after being out in the woods to the Library Governing Board, so I will remove my interest in that, because I will clear up a little bit of having it even spread.
Commissioner Willetts, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, now that is, we only have two applicants for, for two positions, Commissioner Chestnut, Commissioner Duncan Walker. So that makes that one easy. Now we have to figure out Tourist Development Council.
I thought you said you were putting a flip on there.
Well, I'm not making the final decision, that would be my inclination. Commissioner?
I do have a quarter we can flip.
Say again?
I do have a quarter we can flip.
Yeah, that won't do us any good, because there's four, but thank you. All right, so again, I am inclined to, for Commissioner Book to fill that position. He has not served on it before, and it brings a different, a different outlook to it. We can all attend any of these, they're all open meetings. Then we don't have, we only have one vote, but anybody can attend any of these meetings. So if someone will make a motion, and, and Men of Clerk, if you'll keep up here.
Yeah.
That Commissioners Ingall, Willetts, and Eastman serve on finance, Commissioners Chestnut and Duncan Walker serve on Library Governing Board, Commissioners Eastman and Ingall serve on the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, assuming that we have seats, that Commissioner Book serve on the Tourist Development Council, that Commissioner Book serve on the Elatcho County League of Cities, that Commissioner Ingall serve on the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, Commissioner Duncan Walker serve as the member of the Ship Ahack Board, and Commissioner Eastman serve as the alternate, unless there's a different motion to be made, that is a, a working one that someone can make. Commissioner Chestnut?
I still move.
All right, is there a second for that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Eastman?
Yeah, add me to the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board, just so that we can at least have something that can do a quorum on there.
Okay, all right.
And then we can at least sort through what the future of that looks like.
Very good, and I, I would appreciate if the Joint Water and Climate Policy Board could come back with recommendations for, for the ongoing usefulness of, of the committee. Okay, and once again, we have, I'll ask for public comment one more time?
No public comment, and I do have that all straight.
Okay, and again, I will remind everyone that, that I and Mayor, or Mayor Protem to, to be, Willetts have to serve on the Audit Committee, and that I am required to serve on the Combined Communications Center Executive Board. So I don't see any of the lights, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes unanimously, and with the advice then of the commission, I will appoint all of you to those as discussed. All right, Men of Clerk?
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Anyone, anyone? We'll, we'll do it on, on one of those, one of those betting boards. Tomorrow, do we have anything tomorrow? We have Audit Committee tomorrow, Commissioner Willetts, you're welcome to join me, and you, you don't have to, but, but you, it's, it, it is tremendous joy to hear our city auditors are coming to tell us all about the, the ongoing work of the, the Audit Department. That's at two o'clock, right here. On Wednesday, we have a joint city-county special meeting at Grace Knight Conference Room across the street at one o'clock. On Thursday, we have the Ethics Training at eight o'clock, right here. It is, it is four solid hours, but it is really good information, an opportunity to ask questions of experts in, in the field. At one o'clock, we have our General Policy Committee, Committee Meeting right here, and then next week, don't forget that we have MTPO Special Meeting regarding Executive Director Interviews at one o'clock.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, the sixteenth, Tuesday the sixteenth. Hey, I'll just say it for Mr. Ingall.
I also want to add that tonight is the Central Labor Council Spaghetti Dinner, big labor event that happens every year, and then I believe it's tomorrow evening is the Elatcho County Labor Coalition's Christmas party as well.
And that's tonight at 6:30, and tomorrow at 6:00.
Yes, tonight at 6:30, and Senior Center tomorrow at 6:00.
Six, I think.
Yeah.
That, that's at the Mennonite Church on 13th Street, or off 13th Street. Men of Clerk, and then Commissioner Chestnut?
I just wanted to mention for everyone here that the agenda review on Christmas Eve is canceled.
Oh.
Thank you for that, yes. Commissioner Chestnut?
And happy birthday to Commissioner Duncan Walker.
And I want to remind people of the community meeting on Thursday at the TB McPherson Center, where we will hear, get input on Wild Spaces Public Places Funding, how, and how it should be spent.
Yes, and, and that will be good community input on, on that very topic. We're also all invited to Takachali for their holiday celebration Thursday evening at the same time, so. All right, I see no further lights, so I'll see some of you tomorrow, and hopefully, all of you on Wednesday. Thank you.